Welcome to the Town Council meeting for May 13th, 2019. If I could have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into the agenda tonight, I wanted to say a couple of thank yous. I'd like to say thank you to the Town Council for having me as your Chair the last year. Also, this special thank you to Town Administrator Steve Mayo and Town Council Tom Allen. Sherri Dalton, Executive Assistant, also she's not here tonight, she's traveling, for the help during the last year. Also, I'd like to thank WCAT, Tom Stapleton, and the rest of the folks for all the help the last year, as well as all the things you do in town. One last thank you to Tony Longo for all his help over the last three years. And finally, to formally welcome Jonathan, whose birthday is today.
That's true.
To the Town Council for his first night. You don't have extra privileges, though, for the first night because it's your birthday, so.
Okay, glad to be here.
Welcome. So I wanted to also make one change. We have the reorganization tonight, but the nominations are out of order, so the nomination for Chairperson, I want to do first, and then the nomination for Vice Chair, second. So the nomination for the Chairperson, first.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be recognized.
Paul.
Mr. Chair, at this moment, I'd like to put a nomination in for Mr. Dombrowski. I think Ed has shown, over the past couple of years, his ability to work with the community in respects to the number of activities that he's involved in with the Public Safety Building, the InVision Program, and the Sign Bylaw Committee, which we both share. And I think he's worthy of the position of Chair at this time.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any other nominations?
Wish someone would second that.
No, you don't need to second.
Oh, we did.
Not nominations, not nominations.
Oh, I did not know that.
Robert rules, right?
Excellent.
Excellent point, though, we're not this time. So do we have any other nominations? Okay, if I could have a roll call for...
Mr. Chair, could we ask, just, I know there's only one nomination, but I think it might be beneficial for us to hear, maybe I'd just say a couple of words of sort of his vision for why he wants to serve as Chair, what he expects to accomplish for the year, and how we might work together over the next 12 months, if you're willing, Ed.
Sure, certainly. Well, first off, thank you, Paul, for the nomination, I really appreciate that. And I thank all of you for your anticipated support. I think we have a really unique opportunity in the year ahead. I think each person that leads this body, be it the Board of Selectmen or now the Town Council, has shown a certain leadership style, and I hope to leave my mark in the year ahead. I've been able to speak with each of you individually about some of your goals for the year ahead, and I hope to represent you and this town well. I think at the next meeting, I'll have more to say in terms of where I see us going as a town and as a body. That's an open dialogue that I'm having with all of you now, and I hope to continue to have that. But I do think there are a lot of exciting opportunities ahead. Most importantly, we're a team, and I recognize that, and I'm going to do my best to quarterback this team to the best of my ability. And I hope that I make all of you proud. I am deeply humbled by this opportunity. I do not take this opportunity lightly, and I realize that there are high expectations, but there are great opportunities for all of us to achieve some great things in the coming year. And so I thank all of you for your confidence in me and my abilities to lead us forward, and I look forward to the challenge. Thank you.
Okay, so if I could have a roll call for the nomination for Ed to be Chairperson? All in favor?
Roll.
Not a roll?
That's not a roll.
It's not a roll.
Well, you don't have to.
No need for the roll call, since there's only one nomination.
Okay, all in favor is good. Okay, so all in favor of Ed as Chairperson?
Aye.
Hearing none, so seven zero. Okay, Ed, that's it. I'm out of here. You got the gavel, too.
Take your side, so people can get a few...
I can bring the town for you, Ed. Like college moving day.
I know.
Got it. That's my rock down there, too.
Rocks in here.
Thank you. All right, again, thank you all. I am truly humbled, and I appreciate your confidence in me. We'll move on to the next item, which is the nomination of the Vice Chairperson. Call for nominations?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Anne Santos as Vice Chair. And I'd like to briefly say why, I think, if you don't, or do you want to see...
Can we see whether there are any other nominations?
Sure.
Julie?
I'd like to nominate Maureen Butt for Vice Chair.
Have we any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed, so let's begin discussion, then.
Okay, so Anne Santos, I've worked with Anne for three years on the Town Council, and she's a graduate of Wakefield High School, graduate of Brown University. Also, been to law school, worked with the Board of Health, Town Council for six years. Strong financial understanding of the town, is an active liaison to the police and fire, a voice of reason on the council, and is often able to create compromise. I don't always agree with Anne, but she is always doing what she believes is best for the town of Wakefield. So I am nominating Anne Santos for the Vice Chair.
Any further discussion? Julie?
I'd just like to share why I'm nominating Maureen Butt. Maureen has just completed her second year as a counselor. She's a very accomplished lawyer, has been very active, not only in Wakefield, as an excellent liaison with our Social Services, Human Rights Commission, but has also taken the lead on various committees, like one we're going to hear from tonight. I have found her always to be very thoughtful in her arguments of policy leader, and I think that she would be an excellent leader, Vice Chair, and an entryway into leadership for this council.
Further discussion?
I was going to say, again, similar to the Chair, I appreciate certainly the opportunity to hear from the two nominees and hear again their visions for how they'd serve as Vice Chair.
So why don't we take them in order, nomination, then, Anne, first?
Thank you for your nomination, and I agree, Maureen is an excellent nomination as well. I was Vice and Chair five years ago. I think that I've been involved, not, and I was Chair for several years, on the Board of Health. I think I have a gravitas and historical knowledge of a lot of the institutions in town. I also believe that I am a good consensus builder. It's been pointed out to me by several people on the board, as well as not on the board, that I can bring differing views together in a way that doesn't diminish either view, and to come with some sort of compromise, that we can all move forward. I think it's really important in moving forward this next year, that we make sure everyone that comes before us and otherwise recognizes that we hear what they have to say, that we are actively involved in concerns from the town. I also am, that includes employees, that I think that we need to know they are constituents as well, and I take that role very seriously. So while I think any one of us could serve as Vice Chair, that's why I think I would be a good hand to Ed this year.
Thank you.
Game of Thrones reference, if anyone didn't get it.
And Maureen?
Sure, and thank you, Ed, and thank you, Julie, for the nomination. So as mentioned, I completed my second year on the Town Council. I've worked really hard over the last two years, and I've learned a lot. I'd like to take what I've learned, and I'm asking my fellow counselors to vote for me as Vice Chair. I've served on the Lake Structure Committee and liaison to the social service groups and the departments in town. As liaison, I've attended countless meetings and been a resource and connection to the groups of the council. I've also attended meetings of groups I'm not a liaison to, including four out of the six InVision Wakefield meetings and the first Public Safety Building reassessment meeting earlier this year. I'm dedicated to improving communications within the council and within the community. I've had a few ideas of how I'd like to formalize some of the responsibilities of this position and also my hopes for the council in the upcoming year. There are a few ways I believe the Vice Chair can aid the council. First, as being a liaison to committees and boards. We have come a long way in our appointments, and there's still a way to better communicate the process. This past year, as liaison to the social services organizations and groups, I spoke to the Chairs and Department Managers before we voted on appointments to gain insight on what was needed on the group. I also spoke to the committees as we formed our budget, asking about priorities and needs for the upcoming fiscal year. This is a process we should expand to all committees and boards. I believe the Vice Chair can be in a position to work with the committees and boards and on our Communications Manager to better communicate the process. Second, I believe we need to insist on more respect and civility on the council. The tone is set by the leadership, and last year we had examples of the counselors speaking disrespectfully to one another and to members of the public at meetings. I know as Vice Chair I can help frame the tone of meetings. I facilitated meetings for over 10 years and can bring those skillsets to the council. And finally, third, there's an opportunity for the council to be a more unified and active approach as a body. In particular, I believe as we communicate better about our vision and goal, we can assist in community events. For instance, we have a Wakefield Emergency Fund. I believe as Vice Chair, in partnership with the Chair, we could take the lead in raising money for that fund. I also believe the Chair and Vice Chair should organize and be liaison other events throughout town, including Wakefield 101 and Parent University. We have an opportunity for the council to support events in town and can be a unified lead on those events. I'm asking my fellow counselors to make the Vice Chair position a role that is part of the leadership team and focused on a vision going forward. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the discussion. Given that we have two nominees, why don't we have a roll call? Maureen, let's begin with you.
I'd vote for Maureen Butt.
Paul?
Anne Santos.
Jonathan?
Maureen Butt.
Julie?
Maureen Butt.
Peter?
Anne Santos.
Anne?
Myself.
And I think that you are both incredibly talented, and I think you are both leaders on this body. I am going to vote in favor of Anne Santos. Congratulations, Anne.
Thank you.
You need not move seats.
I'm pretty good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next we have public participation. Steve, do we have anyone that's signed in?
I think that the couple people did sign in, but they are here for one of the items on the agenda. This gentleman, you came in after, are you here for public participation, or?
No, I'm here for Mira Llalce.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you. Then we have none.
None, all right. Having none, we can move on to the next item. Which is item 4A, Contract for the Farmers Markets. I believe this evening we have Rob Darnell representing the farmer's market. If you could just state your name and address, and then identify your title?
Rob Darnell, 11th Fulton Street. I am on the committee for the Wakefield Farmers Market. I have been for eight years.
Welcome.
So tonight I'm here for our annual license agreement renewal. It's the 11th year we've been running the farmer's market. Just a recap, last year we had, we had a great season, we had a good turnout, we had lots of bread vendors, vendors.
The bread shop, meat, farmers, kids' play tent, artists, balloon artists, paint, face painters, henna tattoos, the annual Friends of BB Library book giveaway, the Border Health Flu Shot Campaign, the music tent, which was sponsored by the Savings Bank, and the kitchen market, which was sponsored by Wakefield Cooperative Bank. This year, they will be sponsoring both tents again. And we're going to try a new pilot program in the kitchen market. We'd like to offer restaurants in town the opportunity to come and use the tent, buy the local ingredients, and also publicize their restaurant in town. So we're proposing to start with the members who are on the Wakefield Chamber of Commerce as a pilot and move it on from there. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions, and I have the license agreement with me.
Rob?
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract in order to open up discussion.
And just to clarify, the motion would be, the contract would run from Saturday, June 15th, 2019, through October 12th, 2019, with operating hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in its same location at Hall Park on North Avenue. Is that...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? No, let's open up for discussion. Anne?
Rob, thank you so much for coming. This, I thought the contract was really easy to go through. It was filled with all the relevant information that we need. I love your idea of opening up the cooking aspect to local businesses, which is a nice way to have local businesses come down and partake if they're not a part of the market. It's something we all enjoy, so I certainly wish for a very prosperous year, but the packet was a great way for us to start out this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Sure. Thank you, Rob, and I'm excited that one of the first things I get to discuss in Town Council is the farmer's market. I'm certainly eager for you guys to get started. Can I ask just a couple of questions on the materials in the packet, which I agree with, Counselor Santos, were incredibly thorough and complete and a great, great resource? One is, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about sort of the site location of Hall Park? Have there been any discussions over the last couple of years or recently about thinking of different locations or different ways that you could use the farmer's market to connect into downtown or other commercial areas in Wakefield?
We haven't talked about moving it, no. Originally, it was talked about being on the Lower Common. We decided it couldn't go there, so that's where Hall Park was selected. It works well with the parking. It's a beautiful spot down there by the lake, so, yeah, we like it there.
Great. Well, and certainly, I mean, the idea of having sort of local restaurants come in and be part of the kitchen, I love the connection that draws. On a separate topic, could I ask, just going through some of the financial information in the packet, and this is more sort of probably education for me, I was curious on the market bucks portion of the income statement that you had, and saw that there was sort of a net outflow of funds, which sort of surprised me. I would have thought that that's kind of all reimbursable by either people who are purchasing market bucks, or SNAP, or so forth. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that aspect of the financials, or that might be another question for someone else?
I can't actually answer that question myself. I don't normally deal with the market bucks. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dinaco?
Thank you. So, again, I don't have a problem with the licensing agreement as a whole. I'm going to move my thoughts, of course, over to the comment we got in the restaurants involvement. How many non-Chamber restaurants are out there that they can't be included in the entire?
We only go into those first as the pilot, to see how it goes. We've never done it before.
Okay.
And then, we just, we're a member of the chambers as well, so we thought we'd start with those guys. I'm not exactly sure who's even on the list yet. We're only just starting, starting looking at it.
Okay, that's right. So if the, and how long do you think the pilot would be?
We'll probably be doing it every other week throughout the summer.
So your pilot though will run this month?
Oh, yes.
This one season?
Yes, yeah, and see how it goes.
Okay, very good. No, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have further discussion?
Just another quick question. So we're voting today on the license agreement that was just distributed prior to the meeting, or?
This was him, this was last year's.
No. This is last, this is last year's.
I have this year's with me.
Okay.
This year's agreement's on your laptop, and it will send to you?
Was it on a laptop? Not sure.
It's not on the laptop.
So I guess my question is, it's certainly, for many of us, we haven't actually seen the agreement that we're voting on. I'm wondering if it makes sense to defer the vote until we actually have seen the agreement?
I know that it is the same agreement as last year, but you're obviously new, and again, it's, some of us need to be refreshed, so if, Tom, I think there's not a problem timing-wise, if we were to defer this to the next meeting. Certainly, we can do that. I think Counselor Chines, you make an important point, and it's one that going forward with the packets, we'll be sure that everything is included within them. So I think it's completely reasonable, if that's the will of this body, to, why don't we table this vote, and then we'll have it at our next meeting, at the end of the month, if that...
So I have a motion to table the vote.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Now, Rob, since you won't need to be here, presumably, I think it would probably make more sense if we could all review it in advance. If anyone has a concern, if you could raise it to me prior to the meeting, if we need Rob to be present to answer any questions, he certainly can be. If he need not be, if I don't hear from anyone, we'll assume that it's acceptable in its form, and we can vote on it more as a procedural matter, if that works for the body.
Absolutely, and just to be clear, I mean, my motion is not out of any concern about the farmer's market. I am very excited for it to start again.
Certainly.
Just want to make sure from a process standpoint, that we have the materials that we're voting on beforehand.
And as we have Mr. Darnell here, does anyone have any other comments or questions for him while he's here? Peter?
Just one question in general. I know that Market Manager is in the process of being changed. I didn't know if you had any folks that had stepped up, sent their resume, and you were down to a couple people, or if you picked someone already, or, if you have them, that's fine, too. I don't want to put you on the spot.
We've had resumes come in, we've interviewed a couple of people. Some people have set up appointments, and then they've actually canceled at the last minute. But we have, we have a day Market Manager Coordinator now, which seems very good. And what we're going to do is, we have 12 volunteers, and we're going to divide up some of the responsibilities of the Market Manager's job for the summer.
Okay.
Because everything's set, we have all the, we have all the vendors, everything's all set, ready to go. So that management part is done, it's just running the farmer's market for the summer.
Excellent.
We'll be able to cope with it.
Okay, thanks very much.
And I just want to thank you, Rob, for coming and taking this on, and it's such an important part of our town. It, you know, thousands of people visit every weekend, so thank you. And I also just want to recognize and thank Wendy Dennis for all the work that she's done on this. Her fingerprint is on all the paperwork that we got, and I know she's still going to be involved a little bit.
She is.
Until you find someone, and so I just want to thank her for all the work that she's done.
Yeah, she's going to be running the cooking tent and the music tent still, so she's still going to be involved.
Great.
Yeah.
So, Rob, I just, I want to just comment briefly that I know that this has been, the farmer's market has been before this body for the last several years, certainly, and I appreciate the work that you've done relative to this. I know you reached out very early on, we had discussions about this. I appreciate you being proactive with the Wakefield businesses, and we've talked about that, and reaching out to them, and you've really exhausted any opportunities that present, you know, for Wakefield businesses, and I thank you for that. I think that this has been an evolving process that has come a long way, and I'm really excited about the year ahead, and I'm also excited about what you're doing with the cooking demonstration. You're shaking things up, you're making, you're keeping it fresh, and I look forward to that. I should also point out, just so that we're all aware, you had been provided with last year's agreement along with the cover letter, and I just want to remind everyone that last year, the council included language that the town reserves the right to revise and amend the rules at any time, and to impose such other rules and regulations with respect to the use of the premises as the town may, in its sole discretion deem appropriate. The licensee acknowledges the right of the town to do so, and we also included language with the licensing agreement, Wakefield businesses who are participating in the then 2018, farmer's market are able to sell any products that they have identified with the Department of Health. Rob, I know that you've reviewed that language already, and that's acceptable to the farmer's market, correct?
Yes.
All right, so just want to make sure we have that on the record. So with that, I think we've already had the motion and then second, relative to deferring till next week, but we, I don't think we voted on it yet, the next meeting, we've not yet voted on it, so if we could do that now. All those in favor of deferring the approval of the contract with the farmer's market until our next meeting?
Aye.
So we have Butt, Dinaco, Chines, Galvin, May, Anne Santos, and Dombrowski, so it's, that's unanimous, then, seven zero.
That'll be the meeting on the 28th.
That'll be the meeting on, on May 28th, yes. And again, anyone...
May 30th.
I'm sorry, May 30th. May 30th, right.
Memorialist.
If anyone has any, if anyone has any issues relative to the contract, they'll let me know in advance, Rob will reach out to you to let you know your presence is required. If not, it'll be a more perfunctory vote at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to see me.
Thank you very much, Rob.
And good luck this year.
Hey, Rod, do you mind staying for a couple seconds? There are some other things, other things that are kind of tangentially, so, thank you.
All right, 4B on the agenda is Class 2 License, Renewal License Application, P&L Auto. Do we have anyone here? Steve?
I don't believe so, no. This is a license renewal, Mr. Chairman. P&L Auto Sales is a DBA, so the proprietor, Deborah Flynn, is doing business as P&L Auto Sales, and I'm happy to report that they actually did file a business certificate with the Town Hall, which is, I won't say it's rare, but it was nice to see someone actually following the rules. There were a couple of changes. We spoke to Ms. Flynn, a couple of items that she did not have correct on the application. Those are changed in your packet, but you can tell that they are crossed out and done. We did speak to her on the phone about that. We'll have her in, or I will confirm with her and just initial those, so that's all clear. But this is down Foundry Street, it's just a renewal, it came in after the others did, and she has been through the fingerprinting check, so all is good.
So do I have a motion to renew the license application for P&L Auto?
Summated.
Second.
Open this for discussion. Seeing none, the motion before you is the Renewal License Application for P&L Auto. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have Butt, Dinaco, Chines, Galvin, May, and Santos, and myself, so that's seven zero. Next, 4C is liquor license, Aaron Knapp Cellars. Steve, are you able to speak to this?
Yes, this is the local farm winery that has been at the farmer's market for, I think, almost 11 years, maybe, maybe eight or nine, maybe they came in a couple years later, and we've never had an issue with them. There is a special licensing procedure that's in your packet, that has to go through the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources. Everything is the same as it is last year. I think we may also be seeing coming forward a cider maker as well, but that package hasn't come in yet. I see no problem with this. The Town Council may want to defer this until the next meeting, because you haven't really approved the license for the farmer's market yet, it might be a little bit premature, in a process matter, but I think everything's in order, so we could, what if, I think they probably should wait.
Alternatively, I suppose they could approve it contingent upon...
Contingent upon it, it might be easier.
...the farmer's market being approved.
So do I have a motion to approve this liquor license for Aaron Knapp Cellars, contingent upon the farmer's market license being approved at the meeting on May 30th?
Summated.
Second.
Open for discussion. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. This is the vote before us, is the approval of the liquor license for Aaron Knapp Cellars to be a part of the farmer's market, contingent upon that farmer's market approval on May 30th. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have Butt, Dinaco, Chines, Smith-Galvin, May, and Santos, and Dombrowski, so seven zero. The motion passes. Next... zero. The motion passes. Next, for C two, we have a one-day liquor license requested by Amy Wall. Steve, can you speak to this?
Yes, this is for a end-of-season party for, I think, what is a very talented, young gymnastics team. And I say young because they are middle school kids and younger. End-of-season party at the Civic Center on May 18th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Do I have a motion to request, to approve the liquor license as requested by Ms. Wall?
So moved.
Second, making it clear that it's not for the middle school.
No, it's not for the middle school.
With the motion, a motion second? Open for discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Butt, Dinaco, Chines, Smith-Galvin, May, Santos, and Donbrowski, seven zero. Motion carries. Next, we have for C three, we have a request for a one-day liquor license by our own Julie Smith-Galvin. Steve, do you want to speak to this?
Do you want me to?
Oh, it's a graduation party. It's a high school graduation party. The liquor license is not for them. It's for the parents who did it for 12 years in high school.
Because now you're paying for college.
Do I have a motion to approve the one-day liquor license requested by Julie Smith-Galvin?
Second by me.
Any discussion?
Whoever the chair recognizes, how's that?
It was a close one, but Chairman Dinaco, or Counsel Dinaco.
I just have one quick question. I'm looking at two liquor license applications, and they're different. Is there a reason why they're different? One has, Amy's actually has a spot stating the purpose of the liquor license. Ms. Galvin's is an appropriate license, but it doesn't have that same line. So there is a difference. There's two distinct licenses before us, and I thought this came up at a previous meeting.
I'll have to answer that to you at the next meeting, Paul.
I got mine from the Rec Department. It's possible that the newer version may not have made its way to the Rec Department yet. So that might help you when you're sleeping.
Thank you.
So which one is the right one, the one that's Amy's?
Amy's is the right one because we ask for purpose.
Right, okay.
Very good, thank you.
Counsel Chines?
Just a quick question on the application. It doesn't actually say where the event is. Is it, the assumption that it's at the Americal?
Yes.
It is, but we?
That was poorly filled out by your intelligence.
This is for the Americal.
Okay.
So would it make more sense going forward to have this as the Americal application? Or should we just?
Well, it's the same form that you may use for people that go everywhere.
Everywhere. So it's just a matter of identifying the place, so we'll just, it's at the Americal. Okay, fair enough. Good. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Counselors Butt, Dinaco, Chines, Smith-Galvin.
I'm going to see.
So May, Santos, and Donbrowski, so that's six opposed, and one abstention by Smith-Galvin.
I think you may want to jump, Mr. Chairman, to six D for the Girl Scouts where they're here. They said they had.
As, now, as we have presenters in attendance, we're going to jump down the agenda to presentation action item six D. There's a request from the Girl Scouts, Kindness Rock Garden.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Graff, one of the troop leaders for troop, Girl Scout Troop 62842. So last year, we had presented a Kindness Rock Garden, and the location was Hall Park. And we would like to have that back in its spot. It seemed to work well. Everyone really enjoyed it, and it didn't pose any issues for anyone that we know of. So we'd like to move that forward to hopefully have that brought back this year. I don't know if there's any specific questions we can answer.
Thank you. So the request, now, last year, we had this Rock Garden. The council had approved this to coincide with the farmers market, which, in speaking with the farmers market, seemed to work very well. I've had discussion with Mr. Dornell about that, who indicated that that did work well, and there was a good synergy there. With, so with that understanding, do I have a motion to approve the Rock Garden for the same duration as the farmers market season?
So moved.
Second.
Now open for discussion?
It was very sweet every time I went. It was just a very sweet synergy you said. It was a nice little addition, so.
I agree. It's an excellent project. I wonder, and maybe, I don't recall when we voted on this last year, is this just a seasonal, and then what happens to it at the end of the season? And I have spoken with Evelyn. It sounds like it may have, it was unclear when it was disbanded, how it kind of returns each season, kind of what the process is. So I think that it might be nice for the Girl Scouts to just clarify that here.
I can say that I've spoken, Steve, about that, and we spoke with DPW, and I did speak to them about that. So it is taken up by DPW, it's housed by DPW, and then it's reinstalled by DPW. The maintenance is very thoughtfully provided by the Girl Scouts, and they did a very nice job of doing that last year, certainly. So that is how it's worked historically.
Great. So then it would be something that kind of just would come right before the farmers market, and then taken away towards the end as kind of a regular?
Right. Do I have any further discussion?
Maybe just a question then. Is the motion in front of us to approve the Rock Garden sort of seasonally for that period of time that the farmers market is in, in season, kind of going forward? Or are we just, was the motion specific to 2019?
My understanding with the motion was for 2019 only, and, you know, we'll deal with it on an annual basis. That was my understanding. If anyone wants to clarify the motion, we certainly can do that. But that was my understanding going into it. Further discussion? Seeing none, sorry.
Sure. Maybe if I could ask, you know, Evelyn, your perspective on, you know, would your preference be to have something that was more permanent than just this particular farmers market season, or from the standpoint of the Girl Scout troop that's making the request, what would your request and sort of preference be in terms of the approval?
I mean, I think it would be nice to have it there all year, as it's a Rock Garden. It's not something that's affected by the weather, so it doesn't really matter if it gets snowed on or not because they're rocks. So it would be nice to have it all year and something that could stay there. I'm not sure if that's something that's possible.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayo, if we have any thoughts from sort of the DPW on the feasibility of just leaving it there year-round?
It's no big deal to move it and bring it back. I mean, it's a 30-minute job, so it's just bring it up, and that's what they did last year.
I asked my question.
Our concern would be, what happened if a year from now, a new troop leader came in, they didn't want to do it, and it's still there, then what do we do? So, what if Hall Park changes? It gives a lot of more options for the council to say, you know, if we come in every year and make sure. I don't imagine there'll be an issue, but things could change.
Counsel Dinaco?
I think that when we discussed this last year, we anticipated changes occurring in the parking area along where that rock would kind of be. Right now, there's a container there. There's been talk that there'd be a structure potentially built there, where would be restrooms. I mean, that's been in discussion. They're talking about we doing the tennis courts down in that area as well, too, so there'll be more activity in there. I think so, there's changes being discussed in the area. Until we finalize what's going on down there, I think that was one of the reasons why we figured seasonal with the farmers market would be the best way to approach it now, instead of making it all year long in a place. So, I mean, I think that was one of the comments that were made last year when we approved this, that we weren't set with what was going to be happening down there. Until that time, it would be easy for us to lift it up and put it back down seasonally, if that helps at all.
I would say there's also a logistical issue, too, relative to the policy we'll be talking about later on in the agenda, relative to lake use. And there were, for this season especially, there was a potential for some delays relative to having the Rock Garden not approved for the seasonal use now because of the likelihood of the lake policy being extended out for further public comment and review before it gets voted upon, and then a process that's embedded within that, which would compromise the scheduling for them as well. So there were a couple logistical matters. Yes, counselors?
My understanding is that last year, the farmers market generally ends in October, and the Rock Garden probably wasn't removed until, I know I saw it there in Thanksgiving, so maybe sometime around December. I just wonder, kind of, and I would just ask perhaps Mr. Mayo to make sure that there's coordination around when it happens, because perhaps the girls want to pick up their rocks before the infrastructure part gets moved to DPW. So I would just ask for some coordination, and, you know, perhaps some set times so that there's a good coordination of the very nice rocks, which we all have.
If they come back every year, we do get more.
Do we have any more, any further discussion on this topic?
Just to sort of close out my question. So I'm very supportive of this going forward, and certainly, you know, I'm comfortable with the idea of approving for the farmers market sale. I do like this idea and hope that perhaps this is something that we can revisit, and maybe thinking about extending the time period that it's out, you know, so that it's less tied to the farmers market and more tied to the seasonal weather, given that obviously we still have a very active community out by Hall Park even after the middle of October. So thank you very much for doing this, and look forward to voting in support of it.
Yes, thank you so much for that. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? I see Butt, Dinaco, Chines, Smith-Galvin, May, Santos, and Donbrowski, so it passes seven zero. Congratulations. We look forward to having that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to go back up on the agenda.
Yep.
And we are at, pardon? We go to four D. That is a Bino license for St. Joseph's School, every Thursday from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
I think we have Joe Sullivan here.
Good evening. If you could just state your name, your address, and your affiliation with this agenda item?
Dr. Joseph Sullivan, 18 Strathmore Road, Wakefield. And I'm the principal at St. Joseph's School at 15 Bull Street in Wakefield.
Welcome. Could you tell us a little bit about your request?
The school is financially really stable. What we do, however, is we have five sources of revenue. Tuition, of course, parish support from the arts diocese, we have some support. And then we have donations, and the rest of it is fundraising, which turns out to be a huge burden on the parents. There are three major fundraisers, the craft fair, the 5K, which is coming up on the 18th. And those of you who can still walk, Mr. Mayo, can run the 5K for us.
He was my principal in high school, so he's really picking on me right now.
In the golf tournament. We have approximately 20 fundraisers, three of which are large-scale fundraisers. The rest of them are small fundraisers, raffles, Diane's, Bruins tickets, things like that. And they, the problem is that it all stays inside the school, so we're nickel-and-dining our parents to death. And we want to get away from that. The parish finance committee has asked us to find a way to broaden the base of our revenue sources. And one of the things that came up that's most viable is the concept of bingo. Now, we cannot do that at church, of course, because Father Brackle will not permit it, which is understandable. So we have made some arrangements with the West Side Social Club, who has all the appropriate licenses and so on and so forth, to operate it there. The idea is not to eliminate all of the fundraisers, but to reduce the amount of fundraising necessary, which takes the burden off of the parents. As far as there are other people perhaps wanting to do this after us, my bets are there won't be too many, because from what we've been doing on our research to get ready for this, the amount of logistics and work intensity is huge. So I don't think we're going to have a lot of people who want to do it as far as other organizations. But we have a very broad base of parents who have a lot of skills, and they will switch through it. So this is an opportunity for us to level off a number of things and make things easier for our parents, so that we don't have to raise tuition beyond their ability to pay. Right now, we're in pretty decent shape as far as not only our population is concerned, but also we have a reasonable tuition rate, which we work hard to sustain by a lot of in-kind contributions and a lot of parents who are actively working with us. So, anyway, that's the proposal. We expect to do it a couple of times a month and try it for about three or four years to build up the constituency and see how it goes. If it becomes not worth our doing, we will, of course, stop it, you know. That's it.
Thank you. All right. So we, the request on the agenda is for a Bino license for St. Joseph's School every Thursday from 6:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All right. Let's open it up for discussion.
Mr. Sullivan, you said, Dr. Sullivan, you said twice a month, but it's for every Thursday, the license?
On the agenda, it's listed as every Thursday.
It'll be two Thursdays a month. We'll do it every, do it every week.
Sure.
Yeah, the license form, which we get from the state, speaks of a weekly event.
Okay. I do do it too. I like the idea of the West Side Social Club because there's so much parking there. It's not going to impact the neighborhood. That's my neighborhood. There's something a little nostalgic about holding bingo. I remember them when I was a kid.
Oh, yes.
So I think I also appreciate you talking about the nickel-and-dining parents. Any of us with kids in the system know that there's 1,000 fundraisers, and even in public school, you know, forget about a tuition-driven school.
I was there for a long time.
Yeah, so I think I'm certainly willing to give this a shot and hope it's successful for your families in the school.
Thank you.
Counsel Dinaco?
Thank you. Thank you very much for making your presentation. I'm probably one of the only one here that can go back far enough to remember the last time this board had a discussion on bingo. And I know at that time, there was a lot of concern about one after another coming in or giving out the licenses and having them conflict with one another. In your case, I don't see that because it's the school presenting it and not the church presenting it.
Yes.
So where it was in the past, it was the churches were all vying for the same dollar.
Yeah.
And then the conflicts arose as to what nights they were having. And then at that time, going back far enough, we just said, no more licenses, because we just?
Turned into chaos.
That's right. It turned into chaos. But now we, it's coming for the schools' side of this doing it. It's a little bit different than my eyes, but it's just a little bit of history as to why there hasn't been any since this time, because no one's approached us since several years ago.
I think the other reason people haven't approached you is that after they got into it, they found out that it was very labor-intensive and they wear people out after a bit. We fortunately have a large constituency that retrain each other over the years, so you don't run people into the ground. They'll run it for a year or so and then turn it over to somebody else. So there's always, always a new group coming through there, you know. Plus, our accounting system runs through the parish finance council, so they keep tabs on everything we do. We don't have any people doing bad things.
So the money's earned, so the money's made from the bingo, Bino, will go back to the school, though, not to the church?
That's correct. It goes into the, into the school operating budget.
Which is part of the church's financing?
No, no. We're a sep, we have a separate budget and a separate finance. It's a subcommittee of the finance committee.
Okay.
But it's a subcommittee that controls the funds at the school. The parish oversees things. But we run our own budget, and, you know, we do very well with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for Lenny Duggan, who was, I don't know if any of you know Lenny, but Lenny was our guru who put our finances in great order, and has given us a finance system that is not only workable... not only workable, but precise. Yeah. There's a golf tournament named for him that'll be going off in about two weeks. But Lenny was 92 years old when he passed away. He didn't mind like a trip-shooter. Scary guy.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Butt.
So I just want to, I just want to understand this application a little bit more. Tom, so it's a, so it says occasional day and it just lists one day, but it's gonna be twice, it's gonna be two Thursdays a month. And so will this expire after a year? Is it, should there be one filled out for each occasion? I'm just curious about how the lottery commission does these.
So I read the statute as saying that, and the town council sign-off line, to mean that the approval would be for one day a week on a regular basis. So if your council were to approve every Thursday, then that wouldn't, of course, obligate the organization to do it every Thursday. They could choose to do it every other Thursday.
And it would expire in a year? It's a renewable yearly?
I think it's annual, isn't it?
I don't think so.
No?
Lottery commission didn't say that. The lottery commission said, you know...
It is every other license we give is annual renewal, so just not to...
This needs the...
We had talked about that exactly. And we thought that the timeframe we would need would be probably a three-year timeframe just to work out the bugs, see how it goes. And if it goes well, fine. If it doesn't go well, then the sunset will just set in. That's all.
Yeah, so I think that we would approve it, your council would approve it, the state would approve it, and then it would be effective until it was revoked if there was some kind of problem, or until it was abandoned.
Yeah.
Do we have any of these in the, what about the Elks that does the Sunday Bingo? Do we not have to approve them?
I think the Elks has to go before Linfield, not us.
You think that's, you think it's in Linfield, not the...
I believe the building itself is in Linfield. The Elks, I believe is Linfield. I think your front lawn is in Wakefield.
This statute, too, speaks of a school or a religious organization.
It also has a checkmark, though, for fraternal organizations. So I would think it would be a similar situation for an Elks. And I'm just curious. I just know that they do it and perhaps it is a geographic...
I don't think it's us.
Maybe we could just check into that.
We can check into that. In any event, I don't recall us ever granting one unless it was done many, many moons before.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, does this go, you know, I guess I share some of the concerns that Counselor Butt has that if this is in perpetuity, you know, maybe there's just a time, even if legally we don't have to review it, that we just, you know, we do look at it maybe once a year or twice a year. It also seems stranger to me that we charge annual fees for radios and televisions and everything else in town and that there wouldn't be kind of a license fee for something like this, quite honestly. A modest, but still something that brings up a board, this board.
So I think a point of clarification, Tom. This license is distinct from some of the others we've seen in that it's at the state level, not at the municipal level, correct?
That's right. This goes to the state lottery commission.
Now, is it the will of this body that there be some sort of review mechanism? Is that what I'm hearing relative to that? It sounds like, Tom, that the town maintains jurisdiction over this to the extent that it can be revoked for good cause at any point in time.
Well, I'd say you can periodically review it as you choose. If you find that there's a problem in operation, then I think we'd want to contact the lottery and speak to them about revocation or suspension. After a hearing, of course.
Not suggesting, Dr. Sullivan, there would be any issues, certainly, but I'm just understanding you that, as a granting authority, though, I think the concern is to make sure that there is oversight and jurisdiction relative to this. It sounds like, Tom, then would your recommendation be that we have a review on an annual basis, perhaps around the same time that we review other licenses of similar, somewhat similar nature?
That'd be wise, yeah.
So, given that, is it the will of the body then to modify the approval of the Bino license of St. Joseph's School for every Thursday from 6:00 PM until 12:00 AM, subject to an annual review on a date determined by this body? Do I have a motion to that effect?
Question? Can we modify the estate application?
Well, I think as stated, the motion would say you are approving the application to go on to the state, but you are also committing yourself to an annual review.
Review only.
Sure. Okay.
And again, I would envision the review being no different than a revocation, you know, and if there are issues that come up, then we would consider that and then take the appropriate steps. And if there are no issues, then it would just be approved in a regular course. That's my understanding. Tom, does that sound copious to you?
That's right.
Alright.
And just for a point of order, the reason why we're doing every, where they're only looking for two a month is what, why we've given permission for every Thursday where they corrected us and said that they're only going for two Thursdays a month?
I believe Tom said the licensing authority just identifies one day per week and not the frequency.
Right.
Distinct, the state licensing authority, yes. Alright, so if that is the will of the body, then we'll need an amended motion, as I've outlined. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second, so we can have further discussion on that. Hearing none, then the motion before this body is the granting of a Bino license to St. Joseph's School every Thursday from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM with a review on an annual basis in conjunction with a review of other licenses on a date to be determined by this body. All those in favor? So I have Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith-Galvin, May, Santos, and Don Browski. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, a good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Sullivan.
Invite you to come down and play.
Yeah.
The next agenda item is 4E, and that is Mira LLC at 1 Audubon Road. Steve, perhaps you could speak to that?
Yes, I think we have Michael Smith. Now that I checked the application, I see a picture now.
Good evening. Welcome. If you could state your name, address, and your affiliation with this agenda item.
I am Michael Smith. I have 85 Hathley Road in St. Louis, Mass. I am the food and beverage manager at the Four Points Sheraton in Wakefield.
And what brings you before the body tonight?
Change of manager.
It's a change of manager for the liquor license for the establishment. Michael, Mr. Smith, has been through the process, through the police and everything. And it is really nice to have a manager, in my opinion, that has a lot of experience as resume is in here, in the food and beverage, particularly the liquor license area. So I want to thank them. They've been a very good partner of ours at the Sheraton. So we look forward to that.
And we've had the Cory check and tip certification as well.
Yep, I'm also a tips trainer.
Great. Oh, terrific. Tom, is there anything else from your perspective we would need for this?
That's good.
So based upon that, do I have a motion for agenda item 4E, change of manager of Mira LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and open for discussion. Do we have discussion on this request? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the motion for change of manager of Mira LLC?
Aye.
We have Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith-Galvin, May, Santos, and Don Browski. The motion carries 7-0. Thank you for coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is item 5, warrant review and signing. We have warrants on number 30 through 34, warrant 40 through 44. And Counselor Smith-Galvin, could you speak to those?
Sure. A couple of highlights from that series of warrants include hydrant replacements, so fire department keeping us safe, and some park improvements with the springs, fencing, and the lake. I think those are kind of the highlights.
Any concerns with anything you review?
Not at all.
Great. I'll entertain a motion then to accept the signing of the warrants as identified by Counselor Smith-Galvin. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion?
So moved.
Alright, discussion? Any discussion on that? All those in favor? So Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith-Galvin, May, Santos, and Don Browski. The motion carries 7-0. Next, we have item 6A, presentation action items, adoption of policy for structures placed on town-owned property. And does it, may I reiterate, that we'll be presenting?
I can speak on behalf of, I'm not present. I'm happy to speak, Steve. We didn't, yeah, but you guys, come on up, my, our committee.
Perfect.
So just to give the council a little background on this, at the end of last year, there was a lot of discussion with kind of groups in town and individuals about structures coming up around the lake, whether it be benches, whether it be the kiosk. And so this committee formed a lake structure committee. And we, it's a group of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of us, eight of us, who met seven or eight times. I lost count. I think we met on the coldest day of January this year and we had a tour of the lake and all the benches. And I think it was, I don't know how we survived that, but then after that, all our meetings were indoors. And it really, truly, working with this committee hall name in a little bit, we really got to do work that's been lagging a little bit. And so we actually have a map now of where all the benches around the lake are in Veterans Park, which we never had before, and which ones are dedicated and which ones are not. And so we met and we came up with a policy that unanimously we all decided on and voted on, and we're hoping the council today supports it. You guys all got it as part of your package. It answers the, what do you call it? The charge that we were given. So we addressed all the charges we were given. It was a really fun group to meet with. I just want to introduce and thank everyone. So John Carrick, Anu Gurwicke, Bill Conway, Paul Summers, Dennis Fazio representing trees in the town, and Steve led all our meetings. So it was a really good group. We did really great work. And I hope if you guys have any questions about the policy, these gentlemen may know better than I did.
Thank you. And welcome, gentlemen. If you could just identify yourselves for the record.
Dennis Fazio with the DPW, Foresty Park and Cemetery.
John Carrick, 128 Pleasant Street, representative from the WCNA, Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association.
Bill Conley, 83 Elm Street, President FOLQ.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us with this. The policy has been in our packets and so everyone has had an opportunity to review. At this time, I think it would make sense to entertain a motion and then we can have a discussion about this if that works. So the agenda item is the adoption of the policy for structures placed on town-owned property. Do I have a motion in support?
So moved.
Alright, moved in second, and we'll open this up for discussion. Counselor Chines?
First of all, thank you so much for all your work on this, Counselor Butt, and everyone on the committee. I know there's been a lot of effort that went into it and really applaud the effort and the outcome that you've brought today. I just had a couple of questions on the new policy that I was hoping maybe we'd get some clarification on. The first is related to the timeline around sort of presentation to the town council versus the comment period. I believe that, or I believe it's implied in the policy that that presentation is not a vote by the town council, but I just wanted to confirm that that was the intent behind the policy and that that vote would then happen after that 30-day, 30-day comment period?
Yes.
Yeah. And that was really in response to the kiosk decision. And so we want, we want members of the public to see our meetings, see our minute notes, and then if they have any concerns about anything, let us know before we actually approve something.
And a second question I had was just on the appeals process, the last section of the proposal. So the appeals process say that any party aggrieved by a decision of the town administrator pursuant to the policy may appeal the same in writing to the town council. And I was just wondering if we could speak through that, given that the town council is the approving authority for each of the items represented in the policy. It wasn't clear to me sort of what were the decisions by the town administrator that would be made under the policy that would need to be appealed to the town council.
Who would like to speak to that question?
There is, there is an area where, in the playgrounds, that the place structures...
The place structures?
Supervised and in charge of Foresty and Parks, who happens to be here, and the approval of the town administrator. So that would happen on those issues. So if that was aggrieved by that, that would, they certainly can come if they're aggrieved by yours. Well, I guess they can. I think they can, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's sort of the one scenario where that would come through. Alright, great. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Smith-Galvin.
I have a similar question. Again, thank you very much for all your hard work, and maybe you can give us some thoughts, background thoughts on this. So the 30 days, I definitely appreciate, and I think it's an excellent policy because the lake really is a shared resource by everybody in town. I'm wondering, 30 days, I mean, in general, we as a council meet every two, four weeks. So essentially, we would meet every 28 days, 28, 29 days. I have a bit of a fear that 30 days would, you know, by the calendar, fall right after a meeting. And then there would essentially be a two-week period. So we're really delaying decisions by six weeks rather than four weeks, which I think might have been the intention. So I just wanted to talk that through, whether that is an unnecessary delay that we might be able to remedy before.
Suggesting two meetings of the council?
I'm suggesting two meetings of the council.
It's okay. I think originally the idea was just so that we're not getting forced into making an emotional decision, which on the spot happens with a lot of these requests.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Can I make a suggestion on that to the chair? There are some times we don't meet for longer. There are some times. So maybe if we say two meetings or 30 days, whichever is the lesser, that might be a good suggestion on that.
Do we have any concern about that creating confusion? Someone would have to look at two sources, you know, not just the calendar, but also look at the town council calendar.
I mean, if you think about it practically, somebody will come before this body, we will look at the calendar, we'll discuss it, and we will, we know what our meetings are for the year, so we should be able to tell them what the period is, I would think.
So maybe two regularly scheduled meetings in case we had a special one that we had to call for whatever.
Yes. Yes. Maybe it gets a little complex, but I think in general, it's worth it to not consistently make people wait over 30 days.
Could I, maybe, Mr. Chairman, could I make a suggestion on that? Perhaps at the, at the time that we have the initial review in town council, we identify whatever that subsequent meeting, whether it's two meetings or one meeting from now, that we would, where we would present the vote so that it's clear to the public exactly how much time is available for comment and exactly when we'll be considering it.
So basically, you're suggesting that at the conclusion of that agenda item, we identify the date certain by which any comment needs to be received by?
Correct. Within the guidelines of if we, if we agree to 30 days, lesser of 30 days and/or two meetings.
Certainly. I think that remedy is any concern that would exist otherwise. Now, the agenda item was, there was a motion in second in favor of the agenda item to open up discussion. There has been some discussion and some discussion of some changes. Is it the will of this body to consider a vote on this tonight with changes or instead present this before the community at large and then revisit this the next time we convene at the end of May, perhaps? Is there any?
I mean, I can answer that. We had six open meetings where any member of the public was welcomed. We have two of the, two individuals who represent organizations who have both reported back to their organizations. Every single meeting was up and, was posted up into members of the public. I think this is a policy that we vote on today. It's a policy that we're setting.
So you have no concern with going forward with this?
We had over, over six public meetings for members of the public. Posted and in a timely manner.
Nice question.
Yes.
Mary Ann, was there discussion as to how the information gets out about our decisions?
I don't think so. I think it comes through Steve and the communications manager. I mean, I think using our regular channels, which we need to improve upon, we all acknowledge. So...
Perfect.
I just assumed it would be discussed when that topic was being laid out.
So the current motion before us is the adoption of the policy for structures placed on town-owned property. There has been some discussion relative to modification, so I would entertain a motion to amend the current motion before.
So moved, discussed with regard to the timing of...
So moved, discussed with regard to the timing of two town council meetings or thirty days, whatever is the lesser amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the new motion before the, the floor then is adoption of the policy for structures placed on town-owned property to be accepted in its current form with the revisions where appropriate of the lesser of, for time periods, the lesser of two regularly scheduled town council meetings or thirty days. Is there discussion on this amended motion?
Just another point of auto. So are we amending the initial, original motion? Are we now making a new vote? Which one are we doing right now?
We, we have a motion, we have a motion to amend that has been seconded. So we would first need to vote on the amended motion, I believe, Tom, correct?
Yeah, you would first vote on the amendment. If that succeeds, then the main motion is amended.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a, so, and we currently have a motion for the amendment that's before this body. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment on the motion, Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, and Santos, and Dombrowski as well. So the amendment passes seven zero, and so now we'll go back to the original motion, Tom?
The main motion is amended.
The main motion as, as amended?
As amended.
So is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the main motion as amended, which is, again, the adoption of the policy for structures placed on town-owned property with two regular, with the timeline being adjusted as appropriate, with two regularly scheduled meetings, lesser of two regularly scheduled meetings or thirty days. All those in favor? Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Dombrowski. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you for all of your hard work. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
You guys were a great, great group to work with.
Oh.
While you're here.
The annual meeting? Oh, yeah, I'd like to take this up, thank you, for that wonderful vote on the new policy. And also, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite our council to our annual meeting, May 22, Bear Hill Country Club Dinner will be served. We have a guest speaker who is a principal of the ownership company Waterstone Properties, who will be giving us some history of development, that lake property, the decision-making, and their plans for the property. And that's rather an iconic building and a rather iconic spot on the lake, so we're happy to have him, and we think it'll be very, very interesting. And so we're all welcome. So if you would like to come, you can certainly email FOLQ and just reserve and make arrangements through that, and we'll have a head count. And that should be in probably the 18th of May, so it's usually fun, and hope to see you. You're all welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work, Nancy.
No problem.
All right, the next agenda item is 6B. It's a library request to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $5,820 from various donors with our thanks. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
But now having a motion in second, do we have any discussion? So the motion before this body is a library request to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of fifty, eight, twenty from various donors with our thanks. All those in favor? Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Dombrowski. The motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendation for a no parking here-to-corner sign to be installed on the south side of Water Street, twenty feet east of the intersection with Valley Streets. I'll entertain a motion for said request. Of a second. Having a motion in second, open for discussion. Any discussion on this request from Traffic Advisory Committee? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion before you, the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendation for the no parking here-to-corner sign? We have Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Dombrowski. The motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a request of the Parade Committee. The Wakefield Independence Day Committee is seeking permission to hold the Fourth of July Parade as proposed on July 6, 2019. Just kidding.
See you there, Ed.
First off, if you could just, introduce yourselves and, and state your affiliation with this agenda item.
Sure, Brian Fox. I'm the chairman of the Wakefield Independence Day Committee.
Liam Helly, vice chair and parade coordinator.
And can you tell us about your request?
We would like permission to hold the 74th Wakefield Fourth of July Parade on July 4, 2019, at 5:00 PM.
I'll first entertain a motion to accept the request of the Wakefield Independence Day Committee for permission to hold the July 4th Parade as proposed.
Second.
Motion in second, open for discussion. Any discussion or questions?
Counselor May?
Thank you for coming. It's a great parade. Do you, how's the fundraising going? Just a background, I know you're working your tails off to get it all done every year.
I don't know. We have a meeting on Sunday to go over our business fundraising has been going on for a little, a little over a month now.
We sent out, I'm actually.
You're on the business.
I'm on the, I'm on the committee for that, so we have been following up with a lot of businesses. We've gotten, although lighting, the mailers went out to individuals, so those are out as well. We don't have a full number yet. It usually kind of all kicks in end of May to July 1st. It's really when we start getting the bulk of them.
The goal still to have roughly a hundred thousand, is that the?
We're budgeting eighty thousand for this year's parade. It's about the same number we've had the past two years. I'm sure we'll reach our, our goal, so.
Right. I know you start July 4th before the day ends to fundraise. I appreciate all you work.
I usually start planning during the fireworks, so.
During the fireworks, right. Well, I'm at the end of the parade. I see the buckets and the hats going around at the end, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate all your efforts. I just wanted to check to see how you're doing. I know it's a new racket.
No, it's going well. Um, you know, we're having a special raffle right now. If you got your light bill envelope in the mail, that you can be entered to win review stand tickets by sending a donation. So every ten dollars sent in gets you one raffle ticket to sit through review stands, something you were trying this year, as well as our regular business fundraising.
Great. Well, good luck. You have my support, obviously, so.
Thank you. Hope to see you out there.
I'll be there.
Of course.
So as someone who pays her light bill online, I never open my bill. You know, I just look at it online. Is there a mechanism to give fundraising to you folks online?
Yes, if you go on our website, www.julyparade.org, there's a yellow donate button right on the main page. Next to our PayPal account, you can donate through there.
We also have a page on Amazon through this mild charity organization.
Oh, good. Great. Thank you.
Counselor Butt?
Thank you. Parade's always fun.
Thank you for letting me drive around in a car. It's also, donations are, are appreciated, but volunteering and helping putting on this great event. We had a parade two weeks ago in town, the Little League Parade, and we got, we got some comments that the police weren't, public safety wasn't involved. I know this is kind of regular, the roots all well done, but I hope you guys are in constant conversation with the police department and public safety to make sure that everything remains safe on the biggest event our town sees every year.
We actually just had a safety meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I've been in constant contact. Lieutenant Score's the one holding it over for this year, and then he's gonna send over the reins to somebody else next year, but we've been in constant contact.
I just needed to ask, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there anything further that we as a town can do to support your efforts?
I hope you'll march with us this year. If you're looking for review stand tickets, please let me know early, and I'll take care of that. And just getting the word out there to other area politicians that they're able to march in the parade, usually have our two state reps, hoping to get the governor maybe next year for our 75th anniversary, if not this year. Yes, we're, we're an option. It's not an election year, but never knows, but sixty thousand people gonna be out there, so it's a good, where to see your constituents.
And Tom Brady is still being discussed like last time?
I'm working on it. I did, I did get an email from the Patriots today, actually.
Progress.
There's progress. I don't quite know if Brady will be there, but I did talk to some of the Patriots today.
Pat the Patriot. Counselor Chines?
Just first of all, thank you very much for, for everything that you do to put the parade on. We, I was probably gushing a little bit earlier about how excited I am for the farmer's market to start, you know, planning for the parade's another great sign that summer's coming. I did just want to follow up on, on something that Counselor Butt mentioned about volunteering for the parade, and I was wondering if you could speak to, for the benefit of folks in town, how folks might be able to get involved in addition to donating. Are you looking for volunteers, and what kinds of, of help do you need?
We are always looking for volunteers. We estimate it takes about a hundred volunteers to put on the day itself. I was working on the numbers yesterday, figuring out what we, what we need for volunteers. We have our staging area. As you can imagine, it's like herding cats to get thousands of people all lined up on the streets. We have two shuttle buses that are running from Mike's Gym and the middle school to get to the staging area, seeing people to help park buses and big rigs and things like that. We have people doing collections. We've raised about $10,000 walking the route with buckets. So we're getting cash, change, gum wrappers, things like that, and those buckets, very important. And then we need people at the review stand that are just able to make sure those with tickets are able to have their seat, they're handing them water, keeping them happy. These usually are for our donors, politicians, and prize winners in town.
We also have people that walk with the kids that hold signs, which we're always looking for as well. So Day of Parade, we're always looking forward during the, we start in October officially, so always looking for some help.
And I will have a golf cart with your name on it this year.
Golf cart last year, but last year, Counselor Smith Galvin and I were float judges.
Yes.
So you, you need a lot of different volunteers. I encourage everyone, it's great to get out there before the parade actually starts at five, and so we get to volunteer in addition to other events during the year. But the Day of is just a great event to be able to help and make our town shine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your personal commitments, too. I know that it's, it's, it's an incredible undertaking, and I know that it's a lot of hours over the course of an entire year, so thank you for that, certainly. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. The request before us is the approval of the Wakefield Independence Day Committees. They're, they're seeking of permission to hold the Fourth of July Parade as, as proposed and as discussed here. All those in favor? Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Dombrowski. The motion passes seven zero. Best of luck to you, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you all.
Next agenda item is the Westside Social Club's request to use the upper and lower commons as proposed. In your, in our packets, we have a request to make use of the upper and lower commons in a similar fashion to what has been used, how they've used them in the past.
Exactly the same.
Mr. Mayo, they've spoken to you, is that right?
Actually, and Carol Hubbard also attended the first meeting of the, kind of the logistics meeting where we have police, fire, DPW, we bring in action ambulance, all the things that need to happen. What I'm very happy about is that the Westside Social Club and the Fourth of July Parade Committee are really working together. A few years ago, there were little fits and starts. This has been a, a great partnership between them, and I think they even agree at the meeting that it's all good, so. Very similar to last year. The parade is actually, I think, a half an hour earlier than last year. Last year it started at 5:30, if I'm not mistaken. But this year's parade will be a little bit condensed. Last year there was some gaps. They kind of, they worked on that this year, and they're all in sync, so we're just hoping for good weather, and that'll, that'll be good.
So with, with the agenda item 62 being approval of the Westside Social Club's request for use of the upper and lower commons as, as proposed in the packet and as described by Mr. Mayo, I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor of the request? Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Dombrowski. Motion carries seven zero. Next agenda item is approval of minutes from our April 22, 2019 meeting. I'll entertain a motion for this approval?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Do I have any discussion on this agenda item? The motion before you is the approval of the minutes from the regular town council meeting of April 22, 2019. All those in favor? Counselors Butt, Dinoco, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Dombrowski. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Counselor, Counselor Chines? Next, I'll ask if there are any matters not anticipated in, within the last forty-eight hours. So why don't we begin around, we'll just go to my left, beginning with Counselor Butt?
Sure. Two quick updates. One, as we all know, our police chief, Smith, is retiring, and there's a retirement party for him Friday, May 31st, 11 to 2 at the Civic Center, so I hope everyone can go and wish him well as he goes off into retirement. And then the second update, which is a little early, but the Senate weighs and means, it came out with their budget this week, and in it, there is an earmark potentially for a community garden in, in Wakefield. And so it's still the start of a process, but stay tuned for more information, and we thank Senator Lewis for getting us that dedicated funding.
Thank you for those comments. Counselor Dinoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of items that I just want to remind this board that we usually are obligated to attend, that will be the Memorial Day services at the Westside Social Club, and also coming up in June will be the Relay for Life. So typically, there is a representative at both of those events. This year is just something to keep track of, to make sure that we represented at both of them again this year. With that being said, I have nothing further.
Thank you for those comments. Counselor Chines?
Well, thank you very much, and just want to start, first of all, as we finish up my initial meeting, to say how, how much of an honor it is to be here, serving on the town council, and really how much I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues here in the room. I appreciate your welcome, and to Counselor, Counselor May, appreciate your welcome at the beginning of the meeting. I also do want to say, I know she's not here, but a thank you to Sherry Dalton just for helping me get up, set up with email and get my calendar set up. She does great work, I think, as we all appreciate, and certainly wouldn't, wouldn't be able to physically be here and know when I need to be, where I need to be without her. Couple of quick things for me. I did just want to highlight, there is a call for applications out for members of the Finance Committee, which I have recently stepped down from, but is a, a committee that's near and dear to my heart. I'm certainly happy to talk to anyone in the public who's thinking about applying, share my experiences as a Finance Committee member. You know, certainly there are others here on the, on the council that served there, but I hope we get a robust and highly qualified pool of applicants for that committee because they do some great work. Also do just want to highlight, I'll be holding my initial office hours June 5th, which is Wednesday in a couple of weeks, sixth day at the library. Happy to see anyone there who's interested in going, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chines, and again, happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Thank you. The town has a survey out on the hazard mitigation plan that is being reevaluated. It, I really encourage people to take it. It has some provocative questions about how, what, what hazard mitigations, floods, tornadoes, storms, may impact the town, and our opinion on what we could do about that. So there's a link to that survey on the right side of the website under Town News, so I do encourage people to do that. If nothing else, it's very thought-provoking. There's some community conversations with Senator Lewis this Wednesday at the Americal Center specifically on vaping that I think is going to be very interesting. That is this Wednesday, the 15th, at 6:30. I encourage people to attend that. This Saturday, from 8 to 12, there is an e-waste recycling event taking place at the high school, put together by the high school softball and tennis teams. It's a great opportunity to get rid of a lot of electronics that day, and they're actually doing pickups as well as, and support local sports. So those things that you kind of never know what to do with, old CPUs and, and appliances, it's a great place to dispose of those. The Human Rights Commission, we heard at the last meeting, their State of Hate event is coming up on May 21st, I think it's before our next meeting. And similar to Counselor Butt's report on the Senate budget that is out, they, thanks to Senator Lewis and Administrator Mayo who helped coordinate, there looks like there will likely be a 50,000 earmark for municipal solar in Wakefield. So again, it's early, but we, we will definitely support that and hope that it comes to the finish line, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin. Counselor May?
Mr. Chair, really not too much going on, hasn't been talked about already, but I wanted to congratulate, congratulate you and Anne for the chair and vice chair. I wish you well this year. We'll all work with you, and I hope we can enhance and improve. year. We'll all work with you and hope we can enhance and improve anything that you want to do this year. So congratulations.
Thank you for that, Councillor May. Vice Chair, Santos.
A lot has been mentioned. The community garden idea is, sounds awesome. It's something we had, had been entertained several years ago that didn't quite get off the ground, but I think that, so to speak, I think that times have changed in Wakefield and focus has changed, so that, hopefully that will be embraced and funded. For those of us who have ordered rain barrels, the pickup is May sixteenth, five to seven, at DPW, building on North Ave, I think. Yes. So I missed mine last year, so I'm excited to pick mine up this year. I want to thank everyone, you know, whether or not we, the initial vote was all together. I think moving forward, clearly everyone on this, on this council has Wakefield's best interest in heart. And I want to make it clear that I'm going to work with Ed in partnership and hopefully have a robust leadership, and talk to him about, you know, if any councillors have any concerns about agenda items being put on, that a councillor's request will always be entertained, unless it's crazy town, but I'm not expecting that to happen. I just want to caveat that, though. But I really, I think that we can all work together to move Wakefield in the direction that it has been moving in the last several years, so.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing?
Just a couple of things. I want to thank Peter for a great year as chair. Thank you, enjoyed working with you. I do want to thank Tony Longo for his service to the board. It does take a lot of time away from your family and other things, so that should be certainly noticed. And congratulations to the chair and vice chair. I look forward to working with both of you, and congratulations to Jonathan. Nice of you to share your birthday with us here in your first meeting.
Still waiting for the cake.
Still waiting for the cake, I know. Another item that I'll be discussing with the chair that we'll need coverage at will be the Memorial Day Ceremony, which will be one o'clock Memorial Day at the Galvin. So we'll talk about that as well. Wakefield one oh one is Thursday at the library at six-thirty P M. We will have a table there, and it's a great way to meet the people that have, new people that have moved into town. They really are, for the most part, very happy to be here, and they'll share why they came here, and it's very illustrated to the, to us when we're there. And it's just a good day all around. You have been noticing around town that there have been some diggings around town to where the kiosks are going to be, the K-word, and those will be hopefully going up within the next couple of weeks. What I would like to do, and we also have some information about what could go in the kiosks, at least initially in the way of information. What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is have a formal agenda item at our next meeting to discuss that, so the council can discuss that, and it can be out there, and we can bring in everybody on that. So I think we could take a little bit more. But we are moving forward on that, that front. And thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
First off, I just want to thank all of you for your vote in support of my becoming chair. I look forward to quarterbacking a dynamic team in the year ahead. I think we have a lot of opportunities. I think there are a lot of lessons learned from years past and a lot of opportunities for us going forward, and so I look forward to that. I do want to also thank outgoing chair, Peter May. Peter, thank you for your leadership for the past year. It's very much appreciated, and you have moved the town forward, and I thank you for that. I also want to thank Vice Chair Longo for his commitment to our town, both in his leadership role as vice chair and also as, in his role on this council. I want to welcome Councillor Chines. I know we've said that a few times now. It's nice to have you on board, and we look forward to working with you and having a productive year ahead. Also want to congratulate Ann Santos on vice chair. I do look forward to working with you. I mean, this is a team, you know, and it's a team of seven, so I want to make sure that we're, we're doing all that we can to move, move that forward, and I'm confident that we can. In, at our next meeting, I expect to be able to have some more detailed information about where I see this council going in the year ahead. I think that it's important that I continue to listen to all of you as a group, and make sure I continue to listen to the concerns of our residents as well, because, you know, we all play an important role in the daily lives of all Wakefieldans, and I think that we have a really unique opportunity, and with that comes great responsibility, and I look forward to that challenge. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Butt, Dinoco, Chines, Smith Galvin, May, Santos, and Donbrowski. All right. So with that, our next meeting will be May thirtieth, 2019, at seven P M. here at the W C I T Studios. And I thank W C I T, Tom, and your staff for all that you do every time to present these meetings both online and on TV. So with that, meeting adjourned.